Let's get started. Some folks are recording in progress. Good evening. I would like to welcome you tonight to our public hearing. What I'm going to do is call the meeting to order, the public hearing to order. It's currently 6:30. And I'm going to read the hearing notice at this time. Per Article 14 of the ACSD Articles of Agreement, which was revised February 13, 2023, the ACSD Board is conducting a public hearing to solicit input from community members prior to holding a board vote on whether to close Ripton Elementary School. The purpose of this hearing is to receive testimony from individuals who wish to share their views, perspectives, or concerns with the Board. Each individual's testimony will be limited to three minutes. Questions that arise during the hearing will be recorded and addressed in a Q&amp;A document that will be posted on the ACSD website and included in meeting materials for the November 24, 25 board meeting. So with that, I just want to reiterate, your comments are very important to us. And I would then like to just turn it over and start that portion of the meeting, which is the public testimony period. Raise your hand and we'll call on folks in order. We'll also call on folks who are on Zoom. I'd like to alternate between Zoom and the room as well. Okay? So I didn't do a sign-up sheet. I think we can manage it. So I asked fellow board members to help me do that. And we'll get started. So first, someone in the room would like to start us out with a public comment? Please raise your hand. Okay, Lori. And please state your name as well.
Okay, Lori Cox from Ripton. So almost 40 years ago, this community made the decision to build a school for our students, which we're sitting in. And almost 11 years ago, the district consolidated. And about six years ago, we started feeling like there was a decided push to perhaps close our school. And we started working to keep it open. And most everybody knows that we went through all sorts of efforts to keep that happening. But even when we were in the thickest of that, we always acknowledged that if we did not have the students for the school, we weren't going to make it a situation where we're going to keep it open no matter what. Though several years ago, I was not sure that the town was ready and wanting to take on a building. But we are now. And I mean, I know we have a process to go through. But we got pretty good communication through the survey that was done to suggest that. And one of the reasons we did not want the school to close is because the school represented a real center to our community in a whole lot of ways. But at this point, if it is in the town's ownership, it can conceivably be a center of the community in some other ways, some new ways. So personally, I'm not saying this as the select board person. I'm just saying all of this as myself. Personally, I look forward to the building coming back to the care and the use of the town. Thank you.
All right. So let's go over to the folks that are Zooming in this evening. I see one hand, I believe, that's raised there. So we'll bring you over, Walter. And I think you are now have been brought over. So if you are mute, you can speak. Can you hear me? Yes, we can. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Yes, fair enough. Anyway, my name is Walter Ganyu. I live in Ripton. I'm a senior citizen and I live alone. And I love my solitude. But I also like being around people. I know it's important for me. It helps me with my depression. And driving in the middle of the night has become a chore at 70 years old. I don't like driving in bad conditions. I've wanted to come to the meeting personally, but the roads might be a little icy. I really implore the Board and thank the Board to let us have our school building back. And as a senior member, I would like to have a community center versus seniors can get together. You know, we hear all over the news that solitude is not good for people, too much of it. And I would love to join the committee, if we get our school back, to help turn it into a community center that can benefit all ages of people living in Ripton. We could put on events there. There's so much we could do. I'm excited. I've done a lot of volunteer work with organizations over the years in Addison County. But I don't like driving anymore. But I really would be excited to help turn Ripton School Building into a community center for people in Ripton. We all know we need to be together more and talk more as a country. And this will provide us space to do it. There are just numerous things we can do and help. You know, even though I'm 70 and I'm slowing down, I'd be really excited to help turn this into a real benefit for people living in Ripton and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Okay, I'm going to come back to the folks in the room. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? Please raise your hand and state your name as well. Yes, sir.
Hi, Marty Kolchak. I'm a member of Ripton. My wife and I don't have any children. But we've been strong supporters of the school for the 20 years we've lived in Ripton. I have found the process of consolidation of the school district and the future of this school to be egregious from both the state and the Consolidated School Board. From changing the bylaws to a letter with the "Let this be a cautionary tale." We're all aware of that. With that history, I would ask that you just not rewrite the definition of what a school is. You've moved the students. The school is closed. Whatever administrative steps you need to take to return our building to us, please do so. The process has been offensive to the people who live here, built this school, came to all the events, put the solar panels on the roofs, built from volunteers, built the playgrounds. Just give it back to us and we'll all move on. Thank you.
Okay, going back to those that are joining us via Zoom this evening. Is there someone else who would like to make a comment? Please raise your hand. It looks like we have Molly. And Molly, you've been brought over, so you should be able to speak.
Hey, Molly Waters, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, I can't be there in person. I appreciate everyone coming up the mountain on a bad night. It, you know, feels like we're kind of... It's a formality in a way, but I appreciate I appreciate the formal nature of it. And I, as we look at formality going forward, one thing that I think would be helpful to discuss and have to be very transparent is sort of like what's left in a school. If you look around and walk through the school, you'll see that it's already been cleaned out fairly readily. And much of what's come out of the school were things that Ripton put into the school. And I'm glad it's being used for our children in the ACSD. That being said, I do think just as we get into the minutia, it would be helpful to look at, you know, like, will we be left with tables? Will, you know, will we be left with chairs? Because if we want to have a community center and have to start from ground zero, that will just be one more challenge on a long list of challenges that we've had to try to create, you know, maintain a focal center in our town. So just sort of looking at some of the nitty-gritty and the minutia of what it looks like when it comes back and even maybe figuring out just when it does come back so that it works for all parties. Thank you very much for being up there, y'all.
Thank you, Molly. And for folks that have joined before or after I read the notice, as questions come up this evening, we are recording those questions. And so this is obviously a question, so we'll add that to the list. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Even though this isn't a two-way kind of dialogue, I just wanted to repeat. You know, we are going to answer questions and make sure that that information's available. So thank you. Okay, coming back to folks here that in person. Is there someone else that would like to? Okay, go ahead.
Jim Zieger, resident of Ripton. We have two kids in the Addison County school system. Here in Ripton, about five years. We fought pretty hard against the closure of the school, got involved. Obviously, at the end of the day, we lost that battle. But I just want to reiterate what Marty said about some of the difficulties we've faced and also what Molly said in terms of the minutia. You know, I see a fairly significant refrigeration system over there and some other things in the kitchen. And it would be great if we knew precisely what was going to stay as we do try to take this back over. If we do, if that's the way that it goes, I would reiterate also that, you know, I know how much this town... They built it before I got here. But how much this town put into this building? And I think it's time to give it back. So again, thank you for the formality. Thank you for being here. Yes, please, please give us our building back and let us figure out what to do with it from there.
Yeah. Walter, do you have your hand up again? Or maybe you didn't put it down?
I'd say I did.
Oh, you did, Lori. Walter, did you want to speak again?
Yes, just one thing I forgot to add. You know, our Ripton Town Court building, it could have cost a million dollars to bring up to code. We can bring it to the school. And that would save the townspeople an enormous amount of money. And I know what it costs to move it. But I had an idea of we'll make a town day where everybody with trucks can come and the town can move the town office over. We can have a picnic or a gathering at our new building. Anyway, that's a huge incentive for the Board to give us our building back because it will save us a million dollars of having to bring our town court's building up to here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to come back to folks here. Is there someone else that would like to speak this evening? While folks are thinking about it, let's go back to folks that are on Zoom. Is there anyone that is listening in by Zoom, participating by Zoom, who would like to speak? Please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, I'm going to come back to folks here. Is there someone else that would like to speak this evening? While folks are thinking about it, let's go back to folks that are on Zoom. Is there anyone that is listening in by Zoom, participating by Zoom, who would like to speak? Please raise your Zoom hand. At this point, anyone? Doesn't matter if you're on Zoom or in the floor.
I just had one other thing. A couple of people had mentioned this to me in the community. But actually, I think at least three people in other parts of the district have asked me about this, which is, has there been any thought as these different schools within our district, mergers or whatever happen, to renaming the buildings? So that, for instance, the Salisbury School would not be the Salisbury School. It would be whatever. The same as you look at Shoreham and Bridgeport, you know, that there be... That they be given a name that welcomes everybody as equal people within it. So just putting that out there.
Thank you. Yes?
Liza Allen, I'm a Ripton resident and I have two young children. I'm also a school psychologist in ACSD. And my oldest one is going to be entering kindergarten next year. And so I think unlike a lot of folks here who've seen their kids go through this school, I'm on the opposite end where I'm, I guess, mourning the loss of what could have been. I know they're going to have a great experience at Salisbury. But for me, I think I would like to see this move, process move forward quickly. I think what's best for our kids and the community as a whole, including all of ACSD, is really to have certainty and to be able to have a thoughtful, permanent transition for all of our students and be able to have time to thoughtfully plan that out. You know, my four-year-old's been asking a lot of questions about going to kindergarten next year. And like, I would like to be able to answer those questions with certainty at this point. So, you know, I'm, I think, just thinking about like moving forward and it's a really hard decision to make. But I don't think prolonging these hard decisions is good for anyone. And Lori, I'm really glad you brought up that question about renaming the schools because I've had that same thought, especially with one of our big strategic goals in the district being belonging. And I think the name is a really important piece of identity. And it can signal to the community members whether they belong or not. And so I think that's something that would be great for the Board to consider. And the other thing I would love to see be considered in the future too is, you know, community is not just about the building, but it's also about the people there. And while it's great to have seen, you know, some teachers move to Salisbury with all the possible reconfigurations in the district, I think also thinking about the staff. The support staff are the backbone of our schools. And there are some of the people that have worked the longest in a lot of our schools. You know, if you talk to any administrative assistant, they're going to know like every single student in the building and their family and all that history. So I would love to see consideration when all the schools get reconfigured of how we can move staff with children as well.
Anyone else?
I just have one question or point about the renaming of the schools, which, I mean, it's a valid point that I'd like to honor and I don't want to dismiss it. But I'd also wonder, though, if ACSD is to give back the school to Ripton, hopefully rather quickly here. Hopefully, we can get through this process with the appropriate warning of votes and we just have it done as quickly as possible. I feel like that could be up to Ripton rather than be left with a legacy name that was transferred last minute and changed in the last second. I'm not sure what good it does. If the building is coming back to us, it seems that that's not terribly relevant to the Ripton situation, in my opinion.
Anyone online?
My name is Matt Cox. I live here in Ripton. My question has to do, it's a follow-up to what Molly was inquiring about, which is, who decides which, you know, what equipment in the building and which installations in the building and so on along with the building as it's sold? Is there a process for deciding that sort of thing?
And again, we're going to capture that and we will be able to answer that this evening. But it's definitely an important question that was raised this evening that we all have and we'll work with administration on that. Thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else?
I guess I might as well.
Okay.
Jane Finney, I live in Ripton. And I just want, I mean, I would basically reiterate what a lot of people have said because I sense that the feeling here is to return the school to the town. And I just want to say that I've been in Ripton for 50 some odd years. And from the time that I moved here in 1974, my sense has been that this community is terribly supportive of the education of kids. And it could be seen in the building of the school in 1989, which was really an impressive feat. And I think there's still a lot of loyalty among the community that I sense. Not that I know everybody anymore. But so I think the sooner it can be returned to the town, the better. Thank you.
Anyone else? Feel free to raise your hand.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No worries. I just have one last question then for the Board. Because there has been so many charter changes and other things over time and just things have gotten muddy here with regards to Ripton School and the consolidation of districts and all of that. Has the Board given consideration that maybe this, the people in this room other than the Board are not aware of to any other options than returning it to Ripton? Any serious, is there any serious consideration of any other option besides returning it to Ripton? Because we're all sitting here thinking, well, surely this is just a formality. And any minute now, they're going to vote and return the school to Ripton. And I don't think any one of us who are here tonight want to be surprised and learn, oh, we didn't see that coming. They decided they were going to use it for special services for something that we hadn't given consideration to. And I just want to ask candidly, is there anything that we have not been made aware of here to fore that can be a matter of public knowledge? That is, you know, that there may be other plans that we are unaware of?
I can probably answer that. Just from the standpoint of, there was the report that was drafted and in there, it speaks specifically to no formal plans to bring programming up here and nothing has changed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Just feel free to raise your Zoom hand or raise your hand in person. Okay, Walter, you've been brought back in?
If people don't have comments, could we, and we have another half hour, could you answer some of those questions for us? Or could we ask you questions?
I know, I think, you know, the problem is, you know, we haven't met as a Board on some of this. So it needs to be... so it needs to be...
But any questions?
But please give us the questions and we'll definitely address those questions. But I don't think we're the physicians really answering them this evening.
Why?
So, I just don't know the answer.
Yeah, in some cases, we don't know the answer. But Laurie, for, you know, the formality of the process, this is how we've done all of our public hearings to really be consistent. I, I think it's really best that we just take the answers, the questions, and then, you know, as a board and administration, then we can give you some answers. As opposed to some of them, we would be doing it off the cuff kind of thing and I don't think that's really gonna serve the benefit of anyone. So, it's just the formality of the process.
Yeah, Walter, I would also add that none of us on the board speak for the whole board.
Thank you, Steve.
We are each individuals and so at best, if say I was to answer one of your questions, it would either be a yes or in the worst-case scenario, it would be incorrect. And so that's why, to get your questions, we are going to have a meeting to talk about this. Wendy can answer some of the questions about past stuff, like Jim's questions, who was just able to respond to. But otherwise, no one who's sitting around this table can really answer a question definitively and know that it's either right or not completely incorrect.
All right, I was just thinking, nobody else is talking and we've got a half hour.
We did have a...
You have the space.
Yeah.
We did have a sparsely attended meeting down in Middlebury the other day.
Yes.
And we also had some silence and I think we need to let that happen.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. Yes?
Maybe you could just walk through what the next steps are in case there are people who are uncertain about that.
Okay. Would you like to do that or... I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
So, there is a third hearing that is on November 19th and that's in Middlebury. The board meeting's on the 24th and on their agenda would be to discuss the matter and determine whether they would like to vote for closure or whether they would like to take a different action. And I assume in that conversation, they will set a course in motion at that point, if they have one in mind. So if they are to schedule a vote for closure and when that vote isn't the affirmative, then they will determine when to put that question before the voters across ACSD, which is a commingled vote, you know, and what at all those are. So, the 24th, they'll be able to talk about all of this together and determine the best course of action.
So is there, so Ripton votes along with all of the citizens?
Yes, yes. Yeah, that's what the charter indicates. Article 14 of the charter talks about the process requiring three public meetings, one of which in Ripton. And then it would, if the board votes a supermajority of the board, votes, it requires a supermajority of the board, which would be ten, and then it would go to the electorate of ACSD. Yes?
The latter presents a question about how it goes before the electorate. Is how, what the verbiage is going to be, how it's going to be laid out? Because I think there can be some ambiguity oftentimes with a vote such as this and just, you know, does everybody vote to close the school and give it back to Ripton? Well, if it's not clearly laid out how that decision was derived and, you know, what that means and does that mean we lose a building in the district and we lose money? If that's not clearly spelled out in such a way that the voters en masse can, you know, can recognize what is the appropriate choice, I fear things could go awry there. So I'm just wondering how we learn, who lays out the verbiage, what that verbiage is, and, you know, who specifies that? If it's coming back to Ripton, do we get to say how that vote is written up? I mean, I just, just a little bit more minutia that I feel should be addressed at some point.
Yes, Laurie?
And one other step. Assuming, for instance, that this were to, first of all, be voted by the board to proceed with closure and the vote, I'm assuming, although I know that it's not decided, that the voting in all the towns in the district would take place on town meeting day. And if that were to be the case, or even if it happened before that, Ripton would actually hold its own vote on town meeting to say, does Ripton want to buy the school back for a dollar? And then we would go from there. But just, that would bring it back officially to the Ripton vote.
And I think, if I may, yes, Dave? In preparation for that, should that be the will of this board, then that's the time when we would work together to determine exactly all the aspects of conveyance of property so that the town was clearly aware of all of that, you know, as we were proceeding forward. And so the coming months, I imagine we would work together to determine what that looked like.
And since we did warn them... Yes, thank you. Okay.
I'm just curious if there's been much conversation amongst the board about what the expected outcomes are for closing our school? What, are we, is it just about money? Do we think it's an improvement for our child's education, our children's education in this town? It's better educational outcomes? Is it better psychological outcomes? What are we aiming for here? I mean, what is, what is it that we've discussed or that you've discussed? Because we've all had a very different conversation. What are the outcomes that you are pushing for by closing this school and ending 200 years of history that people in this town have fought for for that entire time? For the right to educate our children? What are those outcomes that are important enough to make that decision?
So we'll definitely record that question. For the record, could you state your name?
I'm Wendy Hardin.
Yeah. Thank you. And since we warned it for an hour, you know, we are gonna stay here because folks might come in late, right? So that's what we did Monday because it's been warm and some folks might be coming back from work or what have you and decide to join. So we don't want to not be here for the amount of time that it was warm. Next.
Well, I just want to say how gratified I am that this is happening. I'm not, I'm not happy about the loss of the school, but I understand it. I just, I'm gratified by the fact that this can happen because there was a time in this school district when this kind of democratic interaction didn't happen. And decisions were made about towns without consulting the people of the town. We were misled about certain aspects of the consolidation law, what the law meant and what it didn't mean. And things are much more transparent now. Things are much more two-way communication. There isn't a higher level of school board dictating outcomes to different towns. It's more or less, it's a process that involves all of us. So, I appreciate that.
Laurie, I just want to say something. I just want to name that this is awkward that we are all sitting here silently. We've been advised that this is the appropriate thing to do, but it's a little strange, at least for... So I just want to say, if anyone else feels that way.
Strange, yeah.
Yes. And Allison, I can send out to the town office and I've heard a lot of questions about what the town might have to pay to ACSD if the school comes back to the town. And so I think it was answered with, those things were determined with the aspect of conveyance. But if you can address it in your questions and answers, that would be great.
Thank you so much.
In response to your feeling of awkwardness, I think it points to the fact that people are feeling a consensus of what we expect. And on top of that, we've actually been blessed or cursed or whatever with having, I don't know how many meetings started last spring, that were community meetings that were very, very well-attended. So, it's, this is more kind of like amen or whatever, you know.
And we really appreciate you folks and the folks actually coming out and participating this evening and because you have gone through so much, right? And so, you know, this is great. You know, we'll have some good questions. And if you have more, we'll record those so that we can respond and start a dialogue on that as well as we go forward.
Steve, I will also add that, going on Ellen's comments again, I certainly have a lot of thoughts on this process. You know that, and all the fellow board members know that as well. Tonight is an opportunity for us to listen and, well, I'm at a board meeting and it's been a fair amount of quiet talking and things. And so if people are interested in the theory dialogue, those meetings are all recorded and posted and there definitely has been a lot of conversation about it. And so, don't misunderstand the silence tonight for a lack of dialogue because that's not what this is. This is an opportunity for us to hear, to not talk as much and to kind of name that condition.
That's why they call it a hearing, right?
Exactly.
I don't mean to be rude, but I don't feel the need to stay for the hour.
No, I don't either. I was waiting for somebody.
Thank you for checking the notes.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so if you have just come in and you have a question for the board or a comment, please raise your hand.
Okay, I'll just say thank you for funding the consultant and allowing us to go through that process. It was very helpful. And as Laurie said, the other meetings were really well-attended. Yeah, so we gave people an opportunity to speak. That's great.
Thank you. And again, if anyone joined us by Zoom and would like to make a comment, feel free to raise your Zoom hand and we'll bring you in.
Allison, thank you for all your work.
Oh, thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, Molly? Jason just brought you in, so you should be able to speak now?
I just wanted to save everyone from their awkwardness.
Oh, thank you.
This is so weird. Is Dola not there? Because she would be reciting Robert Frost and singing a song. Where's Dola?
She's not.
She was here. Oh, man. All right. I just wanted to say that Riptonites are nothing if not practical, so y'all really don't have to say this. I mean, maybe you do, but I hope we don't live in a society where we're that litigious that you can't just get on home.
You can tell us a story.
Yeah. Oh, I don't have any stories today. Just sad, this is sad. I just witnessed a community that sort of had been taken out of good sales. And hopefully we can find it again for the next chapter.
Well, thank you, Molly.
Yeah, I think that's... Really good. The one thing that I'm thinking about, the one thing that it would do is it would report everyone who's here as whatever our name is. You know, whatever you are. But anyone who spoke, considered their names would be captured. But anyone who's in this window would just be identified as being...
What's the user name?
Yeah. It's like a kind of triangulate.
Right. But I just feel more comfortable kind of starting from that point. Yeah, that's okay.
And while you may know you said that these questions would be part of our minutes or agenda for the 24th, something I'm hoping as we're coming up with answers and consultation with district staff during that meeting.
Well, some may be able to be answered. So we'll have to look at each individual one and decide how each question is in the sum of deep discussion. Absolutely.
I guess the only thing is that in the... I think in the warning, it's kind of indicated...
Yes, it is.
That the plan to try to is that we can provide answers to the meeting to...
Yeah.
So to answer those questions, like my... Answers to questions or...
Does that mean answering questions is a mandatory executive committee?
I listen to them.
A type of organized thing?
Unnecessary. Actually, I could offer something. We have a... The agenda's done for Monday's meeting. It not only has two agendas on it basically, but we could put a little bit of time on Monday's agenda to focus on the questions that came up here that need discussion. If folks were okay with that, I could have Darcy just add an item on there. Because yeah, it's just the two CIPs that's on there at this point in time.
Yeah, some of the... Like some of the things would require consulting with legal. So that's just what we have to do is...
Yeah, some of the process.
Provide information for folks who may be attending the meeting. Have information ahead of time.
Yeah. And if it's something that we can't answer, we could talk about the process by which we would not do it. You know, like with furniture and that kind of thing is probably is a dialogue that's going to happen together. But we could talk about kind of setting up a process to do.
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
That would be part of our agenda committee.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and just revise the agenda, include an item on there so we can then have even more information for recording.
Before time is up, I just wanted to say that there are many people who I have even just now during this meeting been in contact with in town who aren't here because they know that this is basically just a foregone conclusion. Like, you know, Mac is sweet. He is my favorite person in this town. Sorry, Laurie, you're like a close second.
Wow. Get a bronze medal.
Somewhat less thankful than Mac about this. But they're not here because they just know, like, as you could tell from the conversation tonight, most people just thought this was another meeting about whether or not you're going to give us the building back or at least put it in there because that's the only input that's left. So I'm not even really sure why we're here.
We're here because it's your party.
I know why we're here. Because we've built it in that we have to be here. And that I do appreciate. But let's face it, we've been chipping away for nine years, 10 years since consolidation when we were told that it's not about closing schools. It's not about closing schools. We're going to save so much money consolidating. And here we are. Take some students out, take some more students out, take all the students out. And let's stop calling it the Ripton School. You're giving us back the Ripton Building formerly known as the Ripton Elementary School. And on that, it's 7:29 and I'm going home. Just to speak for all the people who weren't here tonight because they know that this is all just for show.
I think it's 7:30.
Yes. Here's kind of the timeline.
Not usually in a web and salad. Usually if you need one, you can zoom in here.
But if I don't use Zoom, I'm going to have to...
Yeah, you can.
Okay, that's my side. Because I think that's more of an issue.
To identify who attended the meeting. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Will it be here?
Such that all those in favor?
Aye.